Okay.
Are we ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, Dan, I will call this meeting to order. It's 5:30 PM on Tuesday, December 1st, 2020, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order. I am the Chairperson, Tom Riggs, presiding remotely, and because I'm presiding remotely, I'll ask the clerk to call the role, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Dunkle, Welker, Camp, and Hastings are present and participating in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. Commissioners Riggs, Hughesman, and Shuck are present and participating remotely.
So it sounds like we have all seven commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Cool. Thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is or are announcements and general public comments. Are there any general announcements or reports from the commissioners?
I have none.
None.
Okay, hearing none. I will say next month in January is our organizational meeting. Next meeting where annually, excuse me, we select the officers of the commission, the chairperson, the vice chair, and the like. So be thinking about who, whether you would like to be, or who you would like to have as chair and vice chair. I am not interested in continuing as chair. So I think I'd like to ask you guys to think about who you would like to select for chair for next year. Next on the agenda are announcements and general public comments. Oh, no, we just did that. Are there any members of the public participating on Zoom who wish to address the commission on a general matter other than the items that are that are on this evening's agenda? Melissa, do we have anyone on Zoom other than the commissioner?
One member of the public, Mr. Chairman. He is not raising his hand, so I don't believe he wishes to speak during this general comment time.
Okay, great. Thank you. The next item on the agenda then is the approval of the meeting minutes from the commission's last meeting. That would have been the October 6th, 2020 meeting, regular meeting. Are there any questions, comments? And if not, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
And who was that?
Uncle.
Uncle moved. Is there a second?
Second.
And was that?
Welker.
Got it. All those in, although there is a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the last meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Are there any nays? Okay, hearing none, that's approved, seven to zero. There is no old business on the agenda this evening, so we'll move on to new business. The new business item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing and decision for preliminary approval of a 21-lot subdivision on two parcels totaling approximately 8.63 acres. Parcel numbers, RPS 000001029800A, and similar parcel, RPS 00000102960A, bounded by private property to the north, Samuelson Avenue to the west, Woodland Drive to the south, and North Boyer to the east. A notice of public hearing was published in the Bonner Daily Bee on November 10th, 2020. The order and procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. The city staff will introduce the subject matter of the hearing and do an explanation of it. The applicant will make a presentation, and at the time the applicant makes his presentation, the commissioners should address their questions to the applicant at that time. Following the applicant's presentation, I'll open the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony. And if there are members of the public testifying, any questions of those members should be asked at the time that they are at the mic or testifying. The order for those providing testimony will be those in favor, those who are neutral, and finally, those who are opposed. And then, if the applicant wishes, that would be followed by rebuttal testimony. And please note that it's that there, if any new facts are elicited during the rebuttal, I have to reopen the hearing and give the public an opportunity to comment. Following that, I'll close the public hearing, and the commission will deliberate. No new information may be provided after the public hearing has been closed, and questions may be directed only to city staff during during the deliberation. Before proceeding any further, I will ask, this is the conflict of interest check. I'll ask if each of you could state whether you've had any ex parte contact, or if you have any conflict of interest as pertains to this request. Melissa, you want to sort of call the role on this, so we can go through these one by one?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Dunkle?
No.
Commissioner Welker?
None.
Commissioner Camp?
None.
Commissioner Hastings?
No.
Commissioner Hughesman?
No.
Commissioner Shuck?
Nope.
Commissioner Riggs?
And also no. We'll now proceed. We'll now hear from city staff, who will provide an explanation regarding this application, and I think that will be Amanda Wilson. Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I am Amanda Wilson, the Infrastructure and Development Services Manager for the City of Sandpoint. Before I begin with the staff presentation, I do want to introduce the staff that we have present this evening. To my right here is our city clerk, Melissa Ward. To the right is Ryan Shea, Associate Planner. We also have our city attorney, Fonda Jovic, as well as our city administrator, Jennifer Stapleton. And then online with us is our city engineer, Dan Tadic. Erin Qualls, our planning director and community development manager, is currently out of the office, so I will be providing the presentation this evening and happy to answer any questions that you may have and facilitate questions by our staff. With that, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Can you all hear me okay online?
I hear you.
I can hear you.
Okay. It looks like that is showing on your screen. Excellent. Well, again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the introduction. And as a reminder, this evening, we are here to consider the Cookman Estate subdivision. It is a preliminary plat application. The applicant is Eric Cookman. The applicant representative is here this evening, which is Marty Taylor with Sewell and Associates. As a general overview, the subdivision development procedure process, the subdivision begins with a preliminary plat approval, at which time we are considering and reviewing for general compliance with the applicable requirements. That includes zoning code, which is Title IX, subdivision code, which is Title X, and then related plans and adopted standards such as the comprehensive plan and the urban area transportation plan, among others. Really, the focus here is making sure that there is adequate provisions of infrastructure and services with the latter standards that I mentioned. From there, pending a potential approval or recommendation from the commission to city council, if the city council were to approve this subdivision preliminary plat application, the conditions would be executed that were associated with any such approval, and then the infrastructure constructed, and then it moves forward to the final plat stage. It's just an overview of the process. As Mr. Riggs pointed out, the process results in sort of three options for the Planning and Zoning Commission to take action tonight following public testimony and deliberations. The three options are to make a recommendation to city council to approve that can come with conditions, a recommendation to the city council to deny, or a postponement of the considerations, and then on the basis of consulting with advisors and staff, to follow that with a recommendation ultimately to city council within 40 days after such a hearing. Any recommendations of approval or denial do need to be supported by findings to include specifically on what grounds or statutes such recommendations were based. I know you've all heard this many times before. We just like to go ahead and review it each time. So getting into the weeds of the application, I'm going to keep this presentation really brief. Our with our applicant being here today, they'll have a presentation that can fill in as well. So again, it is an 8.63 acre mixed-use residential site being proposed to be subdivided into 21 lots. The eastern quarter is within the airport lateral safety zone, and the general lot size range is between 6,879 square feet to 7,995 square feet. The property is located, as mentioned previously, along Woodland, as well as North Boyer Road. You can see here, as was also indicated in the staff report and included in the attachments, the preliminary plat application showing where this is actually located within town. This is directly north of northwest of the airport. Its current zoning, again, is mixed-use residential, reflected by this lighter green color. This red line that you see kind of cutting through that eastern portion of the site is the lateral safety zone, which we'll talk a little bit more about and was included in your packet this evening. You'll see the adjacent existing zoning to primarily include residential multifamily to the west, industrial general to the south, as well as a bit of residential single family to the east and northeast there. The future land use allocation, as represented in the comprehensive plan, provides that this property falls within context area 3B, as detailed in the staff report and that analysis. That is primarily a residential use. In front of you this evening is the preliminary plat itself. Here on the bottom, this is Woodland. You can see my cursor. This is North Boyer Road. With the 22 or 21 lots, excuse me, being proposed here, Lot 1, Block 1 remaining as is with a few roads to be named in the future, in the cul-de-sac. The application history, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but essentially in 2013, the property was rezoned, associated with our 2009 comprehensive plan update to mixed-use residential. The city issued a completeness letter for the application on October 28th, 2020, and the public hearing was subsequently noticed, and then we are at the final line there, which is the December 1st public hearing. So again, going back to the compliance review performed by city staff, the complete analysis was included in your staff report, and I trust you have had a chance to take a look at that. In general, as I mentioned previously, we're really reviewing this for completeness and compliance with the comprehensive plan, which is a community visioning document, as you're all very familiar with, as well as zoning subdivision codes and the additional standards such as the urban area transportation plan standards. To be clear, the urban area transportation plan has been adopted by city council, and it is referenced in our city code as the transportation plan. So it is cross-referenced within that code as well. Staff have concluded through the analysis that this is a complete application. They have provided all required documents, and that is substantially compliant with city code standards and the adopted comprehensive plan. The attachments have been included in the staff report to provide you additional information for your consideration. Within that completeness letter that was included at the end of the, at the end of the application, one element I wanted to just pay a quick note to, to avoid any confusion that may have been in the staff report. When the city issued the verification of application completeness, that in the map loop, on October 28th, we did make a comment regarding block lengths and the definition of how we determine block lengths. At that time, when we looked at the original, the current preliminary plat, it appeared to us that the block length was approximately 640 feet. After bringing this to the applicant's attention, they have provided us with some additional information. So I just wanted to hone in on that element of it, and then we can take a deeper dive after the presentation by the applicant in the public hearing if necessary. So again, city code requires that block lengths be between 300 and 600 feet. That is Title X. The city engineer may approve a longer block length if necessary. However, in this case, the applicant, and this was included in your packet, I just wanted to point it out because there was a little bit of a discrepancy between the staff's completeness letter and in what has been provided in the staff report as an analysis, is that the actual block length of this block three is 594 feet. City code does not provide a definition for a block, so we have to look to the standards that we have adopted. The urban area transportation plan provides a definition for connection spacing, which is not a definition explicitly saying block length. However, it is a reasonable and agreed upon with the applicant definition for block lengths, which includes the distance between the connections measured along the edge of the travelway from the closest edge of the pavement. So in this case, and they are accurate in their assessment here, the closest edge of pavement is being measured from essentially where connectivity would occur, which is really the intent behind the block length provision. We just wanted to point that out in case this image was missed in this staff report.
So, Amanda?
Yes.
So with that explanation, is the 594 feet the actual distance, length of the block?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman, based upon the definition applied from the urban area transportation plan. So it is within the 600 feet limit of city code.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. We've also found that the block length is compliant with the comprehensive plan and the urban area transportation plan. I did want to highlight a few specific conditions. There are multiple. The complete list is, and these are draft conditions for your consideration, based upon staff's analysis. The most of the draft conditions are pretty standard, as we typically see in an application like this, consistent with code and development standards, and is typically incorporated at times into a development agreement. In this case, I wanted to point out just three of those conditions that are, I would say, unique to this development and not simply something like you need to have a performance bond for infrastructure. So condition F, in this is a requirement or a proposed requirement for a fair disclosure statement that is actually required by code. So I say it's a proposed condition, but it is actually a requirement. And that's for each lot that's located within the lateral safety zone. This is basically if a lot is sold, that the purchaser is abreast, that they're in a lateral safety zone. Condition G is that, and this was actually proposed by the applicant in response to their traffic trip generation distribution letter, which is basically if Lot 1, which was that lot to the west of the 21 lots, if that density increases beyond the current single family density that and revised trip generation distribution letter, and potentially a analysis, depending on the results of that letter, really looking at the cumulative effect of this development would be necessary. Staff had discussions with the applicant regarding this, specifically because we wanted to avoid a situation where we're saying that this development didn't require a detailed analysis because it was right under the threshold of needing one, just to later be further developed and actually kind of working around it to avoid an analysis. We were trying to prevent that, and the applicant actually proposed it as well and was on the same page. So that is a proposed condition.
Sorry, I don't quite understand this. You're saying that they come in under the limit for needing the detailed analysis, given the 21 lots that are being developed on the eastern portion of the property?
That is correct.
At what point would they need to do a new analysis if the western property were being developed? I don't understand how that affects our approval of this preliminary plat, because that's the western portion being developed is entirely theoretical at this point. Are they just saying that they'll update a TGDL if they decide to develop the western portion as well?
Precisely. Yes. So you are spot on in that. You're right. At this point, what happens on the west, if that property stayed just as it is today, the the point was that we're good. We don't need an additional traffic analysis. However, if they come to us with any increase in density on that lot, a subdivision application, cottage development, whatever it may be, that we really need them to take, the property owner needs to take another look at the traffic study in a manner that is cumulative. So it's considering this property to the east of it because it's an integrated street plan, as well as this. In other words, you can't
As well as their new addition.
Yeah, the subdivision process, just to avoid a traffic analysis.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So the, sorry, let me get back to it. And then condition J is that a 10-foot wide pathway to provide connectivity specifically for pedestrians would be provided at the end of the cul-de-sac. I can, sorry to scroll back and forth. You can, you can see it here. It's at the end of Lot 10 there, connecting the cul-de-sac to North Boyer. So those, again, the complete list is included in the staff report on pages 18 through 20. Those were just a few of the conditions that were a bit more unique to this application. Application comments, we did reach out to agencies, multiple agencies, as listed in the staff report for comment. We received, to the best of my knowledge, and Ryan, please correct me if I'm wrong on this, we received two written comments back from agencies, and that included the Independent Highway District. They had more of a comment and question that has been resolved, as well as the Bonner County Assessors Office, who in writing concluded that there were no errors of ownership. And then I also wanted to inform you that although we did not receive anything in writing from the Bonner County Airport, Dave Shuck, the manager of the airport, had a verbal confirmation with Aaron Qualls that no, that the airport had no concerns regarding this development. And then just a reminder, the the public hearing procedures, the, as Mr. Riggs pointed out, the presentation by the applicant is really where it is most appropriate for the commission members to address any questions to the applicant, and then we'll open it up for public hearing in order of in favor, neutral, opposed, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to provide a rebuttal. Any final questions? We really encourage the commissioners to please ask the applicant those questions at that time before the public hearing is closed. After the public hearing is closed, you'll be able to ask staff questions at that time, if any remain. And as a final reminder, those are the options as far as your action goes, a recommendation to city council to approve, to deny, or to postpone. With that, Mr. Chairman, that is the, that concludes the staff presentation unless you have any questions before the applicant's presentation.
Are there, excuse me, are there any questions for Amanda?
No.
Not at this time.
Not hearing any. So we'll move on then to the applicant's presentation. As a reminder, again, commissioners should address their questions to the applicant at this time. And would that be Mr. Taylor?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman Marty Taylor, Certified Land Use Planner with James A. Sewell and Associates here in Sandpoint, representing the Cookmans this evening. And thanks in advance for everybody's time for driving into town or zooming in. This project has been in the making for about 23 months. We have reviewed several different layouts with staff, particularly with regard to transportation. I will rely on the project narrative and the preliminary plat as to how the project meets all of those zoning and subdivision standards, as well as the area transportation plan. Staff's report and presentation were very thorough. So in summary, the project conforms with what we would refer to as the lot count or density, the zoning and the allowable uses, the lot size, the lot frontage, the comp plan goals and objectives, the area development generally, trip generation, the reverse or double frontage access to the interior roadway, the intersection spacing, the limiting of approaches onto arterial and collector roads, the pedestrian connectivity, and the block length. Circling back briefly on trip generation, this project is zoned for multifamily residential types of uses. It would be disingenuous of me to suggest that the Lot 1 Block 1 that could be developed with multiple residences should only be treated as eligible for development with a single residence for purposes of trip generation, so that I could do a workaround, an end run around the need to do a thorough cumulative trap. So what I offered straight up, knowing that that's how this trip generation works, is that if there is any increase in density beyond a single residence on Lot 1 Block 1, then any site plan review, any replating or re-subdividing of Lot 1 Block 1 would warrant a revised trip generation letter. So in response to Kate's comment, that's what that means, is this is essentially a several thousand square foot giant single-family lot, that if the market conditions support any increase in density, then we get to revisit the cumulative effect of traffic. I did want to highlight just a couple of unique portions of this project, and that is the way the road system is laid out. We looked at multiple cul-de-sacs. We looked at U-shaped roads. We looked at through roads. I've been working with Dan since January of 2019 on ways that we can meet the urban area transportation plan and the city's code for things like intersection spacing between Boyer and Woodland. And this is the preferred alternative, especially given the unplanted property to the north and the need to provide for connectivity to that piece as well. So in in three or four minutes, I've summarized 23 months of back and forth as to how this is the alternative layout. There have been no adverse agency comments. There was a public comment in support. There was a public comment that said, don't cut down any trees. With that being said, we have reviewed all the conditions of final plat. We would respectfully request tonight an approval recommendation to the city council as set forth in the application materials and in staff's report. And then I'm available for any questions prior to the close of the hearing, should you have the ability. Thanks again for your time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Marty Taylor. Do the commissioners have any additional questions for the applicant before we proceed with the public hearing? Any questions for Mr. Taylor? I'm not hearing any, so thank you very much. I will now, we will now proceed with the public hearing. As a reminder, commissioners have questions for anyone who is testifying. Those questions should be asked at the time of the testimony. The public hearing is now open. For those who are participating by Zoom, please note that you will need a working microphone on your phone or computer to speak. When your name is called, you will see a prompt on your screen asking whether you would like to unmute, and then you will need to unmute yourself in order to be heard. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. City clerk, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to testify in favor of this application? on Zoom who would like to testify in favor of this application?
Mr. Chairman, for those participating on Zoom, if there's anyone who lives within city limits who would like to testify in favor, please raise your hand. We do have one, Mr. Chairman.
All right. If you could introduce yourself and then give us your testimony.
My name is Jeremy Grimm. I think many of you are familiar with me, and I just want to testify in support of this subdivision application and its ability to provide for greatly needed lots and opportunity for new housing in Sandpoint where housing and services are easily provided for.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Grimm? Hearing none. City Clerk, is there anyone else that wishes to testify in favor of this application? Either on Zoom or otherwise.
If there is anyone participating on Zoom who'd like to testify in favor, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Next, I'll combine these. Is there anyone who would like to testify who is neutral or who is opposed to this application?
And there is no one raising their hand, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Probably not. Thank you. And commissioners, before we close the public hearing, do you have any other questions of the staff or applicant or the person testifying in, in, in favor? Are there any questions? I'm not hearing any. So I think at this point, I believe we're ready to close the, the hearing. Melissa, does that seem like the point that we're at?
Unless Mr. Taylor would like to
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, Marty, if anything.
Jeremy said.
Okay, thank you. At this point, then I will close the public hearing, and at this time, the commissioner will deliberate. No new information may be provided, and questions may be directed only to city staff during deliberation. The, there are suggested motions set forth in the staff report. If one of those suggested motions meets someone's favor, then you can utilize that to make a motion. So we're, we're open for deliberation. Perhaps, perhaps we should just go down the line right now. That may be the efficacious way to do this and call for anyone's comments. I'll, I'll just call, call the names off. Commissioner Dunkle, any comments or thoughts? Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Not at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Shook?
No, sir.
Commissioner Hastings?
I would just comment that, you know, the, one of the things that had been concerned was the placement of the cul-de-sac, but it certainly looks like, given the junction of these two roads upon which this plat is, this certainly seems to be the best solution for that.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I went through that same thought process. Anything else, John?
Nope. I like that it's open for whatever's going to come to the north there, because this would be the only, probably the only realistic access point.
Okay. Commissioner Welker?
I would ask of Mr. Taylor perhaps, is there, or perhaps, I guess, maybe just generally discussing the idea that the lot one, block one is being left undeveloped right now with the expectation that perhaps based on future market conditions, it could be developed. I questioned myself why that wasn't being developed when I saw the original proposal, given current market conditions and the apparent need for additional housing. So just something I was thinking about, but of course, it's in the developer's rights to leave that property undeveloped right now. Personally, I would have loved to see that included as subdivided in this proposal, but just something I'm, I'm thinking about, but I very much like the proposal as it's presented.
Thank you. Commissioner Kim?
I do not have anything to add.
Commissioner Huesman?
A couple of things. I'm really happy to see the pedestrian path. It just get facilitates a shortcut essentially for pedestrians and cyclists. I am not pleased to, to see again the double frontage lots and the cul-de-sac. I think we are again on our way to having a plastic canyon along Woodland Drive there, along the south. But and I think we need to address that issue and see what our priorities are when we update the comp plan, but I don't see developments of this sort, like the UI development, as being what we really envisioned. It's what we're getting, and Marty's points about the looking at all the different kind of configurations for the street are well taken. Maybe and wanting a traditional grid street pattern is not realistic, but I think we need to look at that when we, when we, as we update the comp plan. Those are all my thoughts at the moment.
Thank you. I don't have any further comments or thoughts myself. So I think we are at a point where the motion would be appropriate. Does anyone care to offer? And again, there are suggested, there is suggested motion language in the staff report.
Before we get to that point, I have one question for staff, and this is getting to the lot one thing. When we look at putting in the infrastructure to service the other 20 lots, is the city in any way or developer in any way doing anything different to plan ahead for that lot one? And what might come?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry about that. Um, I actually, I think I'll defer the question to Dan in the, the aspect of future utility. That would really be at this point, kind of how we're planning for the future. Dan, can you kind of speak to that?
Yeah, sure. The developer has and city together, looking at this, have considered future utilities in compliance with our code requirements and DEQ requirements. Maines will, right now, have blow-offs, which is required of the end of mains, for example. There will be provisions for future utility and right-of-way connection to the north as well as to the west. So I think we're well situated for both transportation and utility connections in the future.
Thank you.
Dan, can you explain any further this, the road connection to the north? Is that a road to connect this property or be, to go through the middle of this property to the road that goes by the juvenile detention center?
What we were looking at with this one, and Marty could probably elaborate as well, looking at connectivity to the currently undeveloped parcel to the north, trying to look at those two parcels as, you know, how can one development complement the other rather than, you know, be in contradiction or not in harmony with one another? So the way this was laid out with that 60-foot right-of-way you see in the center would help, help with the future development of that parcel that just to the north there.
So the 60-foot right-of-way, so that's in between lot one, block one on the west and all the smaller lots on the east. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. And that will extend, oh, well, it, it will, it can extend because it goes through other property. But the idea is that it will extend up to the road that will run east-west past the juvenile detention center to North Boyer?
Um, I would have to look, I guess it's somewhat speculative, depending on development plans for that northern parcel and how they might want to configure a road or right-of-way. I believe you are correct. There is a current, I believe, 30-foot right-of-way on the southern end of that county parcel. So that is an option. It may not be the only option for how that northern undeveloped parcel could be developed.
And is that, is the parcel to the north of this piece, does it extend all the way from North Boyer over to the railroad essentially?
It extends from North Boyer all the way to Samuelson, just like this one does.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions?
Is that, is the, the subject property to the north, is it owned by the Cookman Estate or?
It is not.
It's not? Okay.
This is the potential area for a future road that Dan was referring to here, if you can see it on my, on the GIS. So this is the county property.
I'm not sure we can see it.
Are, are you pointing something out with a pointer, Amanda? I'm not seeing it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It says I'm sharing my screen, but I have to share.
I see your screen, but no pointer.
I thought I was being so clear. Very sorry. How about this?
Yeah, 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 that helps.
I'm so sorry about that. Okay, so this is the county property. This little portion is owned by the city of Sandpoint, which is for a potential future road at some point when potentially this property develops, which is not owned by the Cookman Estates. And that is, as Dan was describing, goes between North Boyer Road and Samuelson Avenue. The property in discussion this evening is this portion, as well as this portion, it's this lower.
And can you just show with your pointer where that right-of-way for that north-south road would be?
Approximately right here.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. 594 feet to the west of North Boyer Road.
Amanda, is that a residence there in the northeast corner of the lot to the north of this property? Just, just south of the juvenile detention center?
Yes.
The east side, yeah. Is that a residence there?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Do commissioners have other questions? And if not, is someone ready to make a motion? And again, there is suggested motion language on page 22 of the staff report.
I can pull up here and look at my screen shared that time. Try to zoom up so you can see. You can still read it? Nope. So if approving is on the upper portion, if denying is down below, I'm happy to move the screen.
Now, is there?
To be clear, there is a sidewalk requirement on Woodland?
Yes.
Okay, so that maybe is kind of acting as somewhat of a buffer in lieu of, because one part says that we may recommend a fence. Personally, I feel like the fence is maybe, maybe part of the problem that I don't like about the double-fronting lots. So I feel like the space is more desirable than, than a, you know, an object like a fence that could be a problem. Is the, is the setback with the sidewalk any bigger than the normal, normal size or distance?
Ryan, can you speak to that at all?
So the setback on the south side, that would be the rear setback in this zone. The rear setback in this zone for a single-family development would be 15 feet. Look at how.
Between the structure and the right-of-way one?
Property, which is the inner edge of the sidewalk, the north side of the sidewalk. Okay.
I'll show you.
That's the same as like before in downtown. Downtown? Well, not downtown. A normal residential area. Yeah, okay.
So, and I think this image, if I may, although it was meant for the block length, I think it kind of helps provide that conceptual where this would be the sidewalk, a buffer zone, and then the street. The setback requirement that Ryan was mentioning is from, think of the back of the sidewalk, basically 15 feet to the north would be the closest structure could be.
Okay. And that 15 feet is what a rear of a lot would be normally. Correct. I want to clarify, there could be like say small shares or something like that accessory structures closer that are not permanent. Well, no, there could be permanent structures that would be about five feet.
There's not meant to be inhabitants.
So personally, the double-fronting lots are a conundrum because of this, it looks like the front of the lot, when you drive by on Woodland, has a sidewalk. That probably has a yard. But it's the rear of the house, maybe.
Well, maybe. So the driveway would need to be off of the lower classification of the road, which is this local road. In theory, there's nothing preventing the building permit being issued with the front, correct me if I'm wrong here, honestly, Ryan, for the front door of the house to be on Woodland and the driveway to be on the local. Is that accurate?
The front, the, the front of the house has the entrance has to be facing.
But the front of the lot on a double-frontage lot could be Woodland Drive with the driveway on the local road.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah.
So.
I do not, I, I do not know the intent, that it, it's just a comment that it could really go either way, so.
And so in the report, it says that if there was more of a buffer, it's going to constrict the area that's available for lot size, which are we really constricting that area if we move that just a little more so that houses are not so close to the, so there is maybe a little more of a buffer? Even though, because a lot sizes are well above the subdivision minimums, correct? Subdivision.
Right at it, I think, isn't it?
Five, five thousand square, five thousand, we average 7,400, I think. So if changing that setback, is that going to affect, you know?
It's, it's compliant with city code the way it is right now.
But not exactly, because double-fronting lots, it says that it was undesirable because of site conditions. The double-fronting lots are, that's, that's an exception that we'll have to make. I'm just trying to make the exception easier.
Well, it's not an exception that you have to make. The, the city code actually provides that other conditions, such as an integrated street plan, would provide it to be allowable. So you're, you're not making a variance or an exception. And I can pull that up. I think it would be helpful.
I'd like to tell you.
Thank you. Much faster with my paper copy. And a mouse. Oh, you're looking for the condition?
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Oh, with the wall and fence, okay. It's high, it's condition high, thank you. And I apologize, I could have highlighted that in the presentation, yes. So I will zoom in on this. That is a bit. So city code allows for a potential fence requirement, fencing requirement. So the proposed condition is that the developer shall construct a contiguous, contiguous, sorry, non-vinyl fence or wall facing woodland drive and North Boyer Brook on lots one through 10 of block three and lot 10 of block two. And the non-vinyl is a direct response to the commentary previously regarding no plastic canyons? Correct. But by all means, these are proposed draft conditions and if.
How close to the sidewalk can that fence be?
One foot off the sidewalk.
What do you guys think about the fence requirement?
Feel like we lost that battle last time. I'm, I, I, I look at the Sandpoint city maps and see all that property across woodland drive and just see a future where there's homes going in there. And it, it actually saddens me to think of all of the development and the rest of Sandpoint being these walled subdivisions, but city council seems to completely disperse us on that. So I personally would love to see these lots flipped around facing woodland drive, just like we proposed, we desired for the U of I property. I just, I, I, I feel like our, this, this proposal, while I don't believe it's in the spirit of our comprehensive plan, just as I did with the U of I development, I recognize that it's very much permitted within city code based on the staff analysis. So that's, that's kind of where I sit on this. And I respect the work that the developer and the representative have done over the last two years on it very much, so.
Mr. Chairman, may I add a response? I just wanted to point out the adopted urban area transportation plan, which is a design standard referenced by code would prohibit driveways being on woodland because woodland is classified as a collector. So I just, I want, I wanted to add that in regards to the code compliance aspect. And that compared with the comprehensive plan objective for, I, I, I understand the, the comment.
I, I think Amanda's point is well taken and I agree with Jason. I'm, uh, I'm sorry to see another kind of walled subdivision going in. But the requirements for collectors and lower density streets, I'm not sure of the correct term for them, makes it difficult to, to have the, the comp plan almost seems to be at odds with the urban area transportation plan. And, and that's why I said, I think this is something we need to address as we update the comp plan here coming up. But otherwise, this development meets the requirements of zoning and code.
Yeah, in, in other jurisdictions, this, this issue is sometimes dealt with by having a required landscape setback from the inner side of the sidewalk, you know, and, and decent landscaping installed and maintained often by some public entity. But I, I'm not aware that the city of Sandpoint has any mechan, any mechanism or requirement like that in its codes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to address that question if you would like.
Thank you.
The urban area transportation plan does contemplate that such a buffer may be provided. However, it provides that it would be 25 feet and not included in the public right of way. So if the public right of way has to be 60 feet, it's an additional 25 feet of a buffer. For this particular property, a 25-foot buffer, given the narrowness of it from north to south, makes it, restricts its ability to be developed.
And for clarity, Mr. Chair, this, that is consistent with subdivision code as well. There is a provision that articulates that a planted common space of at least 25 feet. Let me.
Go ahead.
And I'm just saying, when I'm looking at the, the condition I, the developer shall construct this contiguous fence, could, could that, could we amend that either or add that instead of saying non-vinyl fence or wall, could it say non-vinyl fence or wall or landscaping? Could, and then it would be the developers, perhaps they would want to go in landscaping to make it look more in the spirit of other Sandpoint neighborhoods, but they would still be within their right to put up a fence if that's what they want. Just asking.
Wouldn't it have to be the same all the way?
That's the way it's written right now. I'm just discussing, trying to get around this plastic canyon idea. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't require it, but it would make it an option that we said we like this idea. And I don't know if this is the appropriate place to bring that up or if the appropriate place would be when we require comprehensive plan and that sort of stuff.
Hi, go ahead.
So what are our choices when it comes to a wall?
Your subdivision code states that you have the right to require, remember, you're at preliminary plat and only recommend, making recommendations to city council. You have a right to require exterior fencing around a subdivision. That's it. That's really all it speaks to. I think that in working on this project with staff for the months that we have, the condition I is very specifically contemplating the concern of not having the plastic canyon, while also incorporating the ability for the developer to do a consistent wall that's going to be built into the CCNR, so you don't run the risk of every homeowner putting in a different fence. Right? So the fence requirement is now on the burden of the developer rather than leaving it open and running the risk of all of these different fences per potential purchaser. But I'm hesitant with the landscaping from a liability perspective because you are having those backyards facing a collector street, a busy street. So I don't know that you want to go down the road of, of not having fences back there and having kids playing ball in the backyard facing your collector.
Yeah, Amanda, I appreciate the non-vinylness, so we, we don't have a plastic canyon, but with the continuous fence, we still have a canyon. Which, you know, to me, that's a bigger issue than, it doesn't matter whether it's vinyl or wood or solid gold. It still kind of creates this wall for pedestrians and, and cyclists on the sidewalk. And I kind of like the idea, but here we're getting into personal preference of, of something that's not contiguous, not the same, or that is landscaping mixed with a fence. However, the safety issue is a significant one. And there again, we've got the collector, as long as we're going to have a high-traffic street on the, this side of these houses, something needs to be done to, or something would be a good idea to protect the people who might be playing behind the houses from the high-traffic street. And then again, we run into the issue of the transportation plan maybe not being optimal for what we would most like in our residences. So I don't know how to resolve this other than thinking it through as when we, when we update the comp plan and seeing whether we can come up with something we like better. And maybe we'll decide that optimizing transportation is so important that, that this is, these kinds of canyons, whether they're vinyl or, or wood or masonry, are just something we have to live with.
I think that's a good suggestion, Kate. To some degree, because of the, the shape and size of this parcel, there aren't a lot of options outside of the subdivision configuration that's been proposed here. I think, I think a broader general discussion at the comp plan level would be really helpful.
Are there other, other?
One possible solution on that too would be if there was a maximum height on that fence, so that it's not gannianized. I mean, if it was shorter, then you would, you wouldn't get that same kind of image. I'm not saying we should propose that at this point, but perhaps for future.
Are there other thoughts or comments, or is anyone ready to make a motion? Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion. I would, a motion for approval. And moving on, in zone commission, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho code and Sandpoint city code, recommend the city Sandpoint, the Sandpoint city council approve this request by Eric Cookman and the Cookman estates of the two parcels named. And the total in approximately 8.63 acres bounded by private property to the north, Samuelson Avenue to the west, woodland to the south, and North Boyer to the east. Subject to the following conditions, I would want all the conditions that have been outlined by staff be included in those conditions. And I think based upon the evidence we've seen, that this is in compliance with current city code as it is. I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. The motion was made by who?
John Hastings.
Thank you, thank you, John. We have a motion and a second, all those in, well, Melissa, why don't you call the roll?
And may I add, I'm, I'm assuming that you are making the motion based on the grounds that it is in compliance with city code and not in conflict with the comprehensive plan.
Correct, yes, I think I said that.
I may have missed it because I'm multitasking.
Okay. Melissa, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Huesman?
Yes.
Commissioner Cam?
Yes.
Commissioner Welker?
Yes.
Commissioner Duffell?
Yes.
Commissioner Shook?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Right, sounds like the motion passes seven zero. A good discussion, I think, and I believe that that brings us to the end of our agenda, unless anyone else has anything to bring up. I'll ask you now. If not, this meeting is now adjourned at 6:33 PM. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all.
Thank you for the effort you put in.